Red.
I think, I think you're gonna say to reboot it.
Turn it off, turn it back on.
Unplug.
You should be allowed to.
You good? Hi, wanna call me in order, sort of question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one.
Mr. Rutledge, would you mind if I did this here?
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for allowing us to come together for this evening to discuss the business of Lake City. May I ask that you watch over this meeting, that you guide us with the heart and spirit, provide us with the facts and leads to make decisions that are true and right, with the best interest for the citizens of Lake City.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and I will do the roll call. Corey Glassberg.
President.
Kim Williams.
Here.
Uh, Colby Caper.
Here.
Will Rutledge.
Here.
Brad Smithy.
Here.
And Charles Scarborough is absent, and I'm Allison Sater, City Secretary, I'm here. New York Stevens, Sidian Shader is here, and Brett Hill, City Director.
Thank you, Allison.
Please confirm the agenda, citizen comments?
We don't have any tonight.
Please confirm five, I'm the committee here.
I'll let, Mr. Lonnie, Chief Lonnie go first. Need to stage a podium here for you?
Yeah, if you don't want.
Hold the minutes. Right, calls from October twenty twenty, EMT of ten, NVA is one, fire five, two which are false alarms, dirty air filters, and somebody had a, they returned, they had it pretty much blocked off and it. Smoked it past. I think I forgot to mention last month, our fundraiser raised almost thirteen thousand dollars. I don't think we, we're free and clear, I don't think we have any bills, I mean, it didn't cost us anything. If we did some things. Uh, four thousand dollar ticket sales, rest is donation or sign auction. I already, the building's coming along, In-N-Out Litican donated cement tiles and metal to build a hose washer rack. So, we're at, we don't have to pay for any of that. Uh, electricians, HVAC, and plumbers have a little bit to do. Need to put one more coat of paint in the meeting room, office is still running, and then, once Wade gets, everything else put in, the cabinets, the cement tiles, lights, the duct, the vents, uh, we're having cleanup day, we're gonna need to mop everything up, clean it up, and then we'll put down one more coat of cement after that, we're ready to move in. Uh, we're gonna try, John and I are trying to burn that brush pile Thursday or Friday. That's what we're waiting for, listen, wind's just crazy. And, I got word today that Judge Jackson put restrictions on aerial fireworks today for New Year's Eve. So, for, I don't know if y'all are planning to do the fireworks show or something, but you might wanna hold off.
I don't think we're.
I, yeah. That is all I have, y'all.
Lonnie, real quick, when's your projected date for y'all moving in?
I don't think, maybe two, three weeks.
How in the year y'all be in it though?
I think so.
That just helps us with planning.
Yes, got you.
City manager, I'll piggyback off of Lonnie, we are scheduled to move in Friday at two o'clock. Um, one of the local movers here in Lake City is gonna move us. And so, uh, he should be finishing up one job at one o'clock, get up to City Hall, I mean, to the trailer. We'll be moving all the stuff out of the trailer on Friday afternoon. Um, until it's all moved, and then Monday, uh, CompuTronics is supposed to be over there setting the, uh, network and everything. Uh, and so, Friday afternoon, we might be down for a little bit, um, and then Monday morning, we might, we'll probably be down for a little bit. Um, but then again, we're, wanna remind y'all too, that, uh, y'all are supposed to have a propane or whatever gas inspection, they're supposed to come out Thursday of this week. Cause they got the HVAC in and all that, y'all are just literally days away from being, pretty much to where y'all can start doing some, moving some stuff, not everything's gonna be done, but, um, our plan is to, you know, start next week, we'll have city offices out of there. Be operating out of there, city offices wise. This will be our last meeting for city council in this room, um, January, we don't meet in December, like always. January, we plan on starting city council over there. Um, a couple of things, we do have, we are planning on having a super task force, uh, committee meeting the week after Thanksgiving. Um, Thanksgiving, we're closed on Thanksgiving Day, and then like Friday after, so the offices will be closed then. Um, obviously, we always go to call, we got on standby. A couple of other things that I wanted to bring up was, um, I've got a lot of phone calls this year, everybody else saying the wild hogs and everything else. City has no ties or responsibility to that, that's really not our game to get in, we're the liability there, we don't wanna get involved in that, trapping hogs and stuff like that. So, anybody asks y'all, I would tell the city has no ties to it. Um, a couple of other things that I wanted to ask, um, and see if y'all wanted to put it on the agenda, um, or entertain it for, uh, January, I've had a couple peoples, uh, for our account, I haven't, a couple people reach out to me about, um, purchasing, um, there's a, a lot that is available on North Stevie, I don't know if y'all know where the family Davison them live. Uh, across the street, there's a lot that's been owned by the city. Um, I know, three years ago, I found out today, three years ago, they inquired about it, and we wanted to put in an offer on it. And Sam was city manager at the time, he told them, know that, um, we're with that Texas Park and Wildlife Grant, we gotta wait twenty years. It was deeded over in April of two thousand and one, so it wouldn't be available until, um, April of twenty twenty one. I don't know if that's something individual asked me, and I told them I would at least pass it on to the council, see if y'all wanna entertain that. And then also, there's still one more lot at the end, Royal, dead end back there, that the city owns, um, that's free and clear water and sewer. And if we wanted to, we could sell that lot. Um, I, I, I didn't know if y'all wanted to entertain that, put that on the council agenda for January, or if y'all are like, no, I don't wanna have anything to do with that, if y'all would, just in between now and the next couple of weeks, email me and let me know what your thoughts are on that. Um, other than that, that's all I got for city manager, uh, updates. Oh, um, Jeff Boyd's been doing the inspections, and we've done thirteen to date, and he has three scheduled for this week overall Victoria, so we should have about fifteen to sixteen done. Again, good response, um, no major pickups right now, there was one that a lid was, um, faulty and broke, and, um, he made the homeowner aware of it. Said it was gonna go before the sewer task force committee, and she offered to pay for it, and she wanted to fix it herself, and so, we didn't have to worry about it.
Uh, quick question, when do you, when do you think the trailer and the container will be picked up?
Yes, trailer, the roll-off container should be gone next week, scheduled to come first of the next week. Um, and then, the trailer's scheduled December the first, before that.
What about the, uh, historic container?
The, oh, you're talking about the, the, it's scheduled, soon as we move Friday, they got to go ahead, and they said they were gonna try to get to it next week. It might be the week after Thanksgiving, it's just.
The trailer has, that one has go by first, or the?
No, they, no, they came in from Highway seventy nine to get to that one, so. Yep. You might steal it on.
Anything else you can count?
Uh, can you put something out, probably since y'all are gonna be down on Friday and then Monday, just put it on the city page, and then I can share it to Vince and whatever else.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, brings number six, consented, uh, consent agenda, I'll entertain the motion and the grade.
Make the motion, make consent for the agenda.
Mr. Careful makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Careful seconds it, discussion between council, all is embarrassed, say aye.
Aye.
Proves say no, motion passes.
Hey, before we go on, I meant to, I had it written down, um, Edin is scheduled to come in and do the audit at the end of January, January twenty fourth through twenty sixth. So, it won't be in January's council thing, but it should be on February.
Number seven, regular agenda item, number seven A, discussion and consideration on COVID nineteen status updates in your city for our calls.
I don't have anything, we're continuing, we had to send in a plan of action to spend the remaining, um, we were allotted the twenty thousand up front, and we have sixty thousand left, based on my per capita income, and we haven't submitted by November the fifteenth, are we gonna spend the, the last, sending in, no kickbacks or anything like that, so we're still on track. Now, if we don't spend it, it's just, we don't get reimbursement, and it's one of those things that, again, it has to be used for stuff that is going for COVID, where to help further the, the number spreading of it and stuff like that.
I have some contact with Judge Jackson, no major updates other than the ones that we've already.
How much, how much is it?
It's sixty thousand dollars and somewhat change is what we're allotted. Now, we don't have to spend all sixty thousand, it's one of those things, um, for hand sanitizer, uh, stations, um, stuff to help us do stuff online, everything like that, um, there's all sorts of stuff, mask, all that stuff, it covers, anything like that, it covers.
And that, that four bathroom that we talked about in the park, would that have any bearing on that?
Yeah, that's a good idea, I can definitely, I mean, talk to Lance tomorrow and see if that will, Lance will, you know, and see. Man, that's, yeah, that's a good idea, right? Yeah. Do what?
Did you want me to bring up my items for the food stuff?
No, no, with me, yeah.
All right, I will move to seven B for another discussion. Discussion consideration on approval of payment to contractor in an athletic company for the percentage of work completed and stored to date, being October thirty first, twenty twenty, in the amount of sixty one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars even.
Yeah, and you can see after this payment, there's only a hundred and one, five thirty nine left. Um, and that's including the retainers to pay off to them. And I, now, I didn't make him aware that we don't have a meeting in December, and he said January is final, and that's, he's turned everything else and has taken special stuff like that.
I entertain the motion, wanna agree?
Make the motion as you presume.
Mr. Careful makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Careful seconds it, discussion between council, all is embarrassed, say aye.
Aye.
Proves say no, motion passes. Please do, river agenda item, seven C, discussion and consideration on appointment of city attorney.
Um, yes, I'm assuming we would go to executive session.
Please.
And, uh, discuss city technical.
Make the motion, go into the decision.
Mr. Careful makes the motion, is there a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Careful seconds it, all is embarrassed, say aye.
Allison.
Yes.
Where does Julie from?
Um, she's from Michelle Falls, well, I'm not, I'm not sure about Missouri, I, I think she's practicing with Michelle Falls.
She had their own office?
I, I have no idea, honestly, I do not know.
You might wanna go in there and touch these.
I can hear, I can hear PM, she'll be the last one standing, it's okay, I'll just let her have it.
I mean, yeah, she has her own office here in Michelle Falls, and she's from.
She practice, oh, so she had her own practice. What's her last name?
Basswood.
Basswood.
Why did they go into executive session?
You like.
Why did they go into executive session?
I don't wanna talk about it, I can find the whole world.
Yeah.
Normally, I can just take it, flip it up.
I looked at those, I just don't think I'm holding them up, yeah.
There's a whole paint job on it.
Yeah.
There'll be three hours discussing. Fifty kings are amazing, you might know them. What was your? Come on, that's amazing.
I thought you had to, no. Yeah, buying more, it's a hassle. And buying more. He said, I thought it was installed from last, he says it's been two weeks, that's scary. We didn't get generators then for two months. Nobody had generators.
That's where it started.
They all went.
I've got a K W portable and a seventeen K W. And the power went out, so.
A lot of people go into that, uh, you know, standalone system, I think it's, I know it's expensive, but if you're in an area where it's on that, go out on.
Yeah, what, what do you say here?
We've had too many lightning. So many blown fuses. The first time, it was years ago, we moved into the house, the power went out. And we didn't have a way to move the house, cause everything was electricized. Then the guy from hardcore comes, oh, the crazy computer, can't get into this house, can you? We took care of that.
Yeah, Truman, Truman James. Generator. And built them up, that's for one shot. Upwell ground. He said, you can always tell when I didn't get it, I had them all.
I've got one in the shop, if you need one.
I wrote that.
Affordable. No, with us having a basement, we have to make sure our pumps run, because it backs up, it's not free site in the basement. And we're speaking from experience.
That's what a lot of people are telling me is, why is it turning, there's like buyers and stuff?
Well, the reason why we get such good care is that we got two hardcore people in the east. Honey, you better than chairman of power, Rebecca. We had ours done, but one type for two days. Which might like them stealing the generator.
That's probably why I haven't hidden.
To their back stealing your conditioner. So, I was hoping, I haven't seen my, I was just on the picture, so. I was hoping maybe you might have, so that we could get, how do you get.
I don't know, yeah, I can't, um.
But they're doing three more this weekend, so.
Well, mine and Jake's supposed to be ran, so, keep the legs there, until we get that data.
But so far, everybody is just, this is my issue.
Well, good, that's all we need to know.
And they just got ten more pumps in.
Well, it's like when I'm getting the new things for grants or anything for twenty twenty two. Could, my, I'm sorry, Marjorie, that, I don't know, everybody sends a grant.
But if I can get the I N I water from three hundred and seventy-five thousand to under a hundred, we're gonna be able to breathe fifteen, twenty years life until it's ruined.
Yeah, that would be super great, and get everybody on board that's coming back in, too, on the new system. All we need now is.
We're gonna, um, have a Christmas meeting for all you guys next month, at McRide's.
Man, I haven't been in a restaurant since before.
We're gonna get the private room.
I know, I like the bad, it's not Thanksgiving, which is, it's just not worth it. They put out a stat today, seven hundred percent increase in cases, four hundred percent increase in death, we're shocked, man.
But because, that's because people aren't even counting that.
You see it, everything we've done. This guy, this guy went, walked into a hospital and said, why? And the lady said, you need to wear a mask, I'm not wearing a mask, you know, coming in, you can't stop me, yes, you can.
You should see all the stuff we see coming in and out of the thing, for, yeah, in the next door.
Yeah.
Oh, there was an ambulance there yesterday.
There's an ambulance, is it at all?
Really?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
If they, if they're in front, if they're in front, it's an emergency, if they're in back, it's a dead body.
They weren't dead.
They had, what was it, they had a hundred and sixty-seven case. It's, you know, if you can't afford it, it doesn't mean anything.
Two of my really good friends just died last week, so they're home now. He's feeling really bad, and she just feels like she's got a chest infection, but her other teacher friend, who has it really bad, is like, the whole nine yards. Like miserable in her case.
It was like when they had COVID.
They're in their, like, late twenties.
They didn't have, they didn't have white, I went to the shop, got two buckets of wipes, and said, now you can wipe your stuff down between people.
I have a sister mom, she works in a nursing home, she had a mask, and when she goes to work, she refuses to wear a mask.
And we, we got in a hundred and twenty one gallon buckets of wipes.
Yeah.
Hospital grade, no alcohol, the real, the real stuff.
Maybe they'd be calling me, that's all, so.
I get them out of Vancouver, Canada. I called, I said, I need to order six or eight, you know, whatever comes in case.
Allison. Is John agenda?
No, it's not like it, but we can add it, I have your members in the city council, so they can add it.
I had a doctor back, I started back in March, calling up, you know, you get anything, you, right, you have something ninety-five, you have to charge your trip. Hmm, I found somebody that would be, or I said he not found it before. He goes, aren't they government certified, I think so. He said, it's, it probably comes from the high schools up there. I called him down, but he.
Yeah, I'll have Eric come.
See you.
So, I called, and it's not resulted in the argument that you, you have seen. And here it was very discouraging. But I will come into those. Because of the amount of people. The place is crazy, I wanna put it in the pilot. So, I'm tracking my damn for nothing. I'll eat at McRide's, and I'll eat at Catfish Place on South First Parkway, and then, and I'll eat at eleven o'clock in the morning.
I haven't been in one, I've, I've used the building. No way, I've seen so many, I've seen so many people walking down.
Well, I've been dealing with. I got you.
Where'd you do that thing?
Right, have a recall.
Oh, yeah, on one of the, one of the lots.
Four recalls. The first one is airbag, no big deal. Second one is the fuel pump in the gas tank, and the big gasoline keeps powering fire.
Small detail. I already had it.
The third one, they forgot to put a little, to the transmissions, and we made it, we think, only transmission was ordered, vehicle proved. And the fourth one. I forgot a little bit. So, we're testing.
We actually, like, six, solid degrees.
Sixty-five thousand.
Twelve, thirteen days, and I'm still.
I'm still not. I got, I got, I popped on September tenth.
Eighty. I put so many miles on it. I put so many miles on it.
You can't get back. Looks so great.
And my Ford pickup out there. I've been having trouble with it. And then all of a sudden.
Yeah, we're somewhere, bored of it.
Only thing. Pure adrenaline.
We're gonna buy the truck back.
Supposedly the one person that has.
I've been looking, I tried to, I used to have a rig line. And I had a whole bunch of stuff, oil filters and stuff like that, because nobody ever had oil filters. When I find it, I'll give it to you.
Just, it's just amazing.
I love that.
I love that. But you can't go through it. For a big one, it's a go-all-in.
Oh, well, here they come. It must be behind a pretty big door.
Yeah. I couldn't, I couldn't address the.
Oh, this is crazy.
Yeah.
All right, we're good. Eric, are we still on? Are we good?
Yep, you're still on.
I'll entertain a motion to go back into, um, private session.
I'm like.
This is in the motion, is there a second? Mr. K, for seconds, it all is clear beside eye.
Aye.
Folks, a no? All right, the following action will be taken back into open session, which we are currently in. Council will accept the resignation of City Attorney Brett Hell and appointing our new City Attorney, Julie Bestwith, as her current. Uh, Brett, just real quick, I just want to say just time to thank you for your service to our community, our citizens. We appreciate everything you've done for us, working with our team. We just appreciate your time and everything you've done for us. So, thank you, and we appreciate you, Brett. Thank you for coming down.
Well, I appreciate y'all so much.
Thank you, Brett.
All right, that will bring us to. Agenda seven D.
Um, yeah, we, this is nothing, seven stone, we're gonna put a tower up or anything else. We had a, uh, local wireless internet service provider. Uh, reach out to us and said that he would, uh, definitely be interested in constructing a, um, tower. I'll show, just so you know, this is sort of what they look like. This is the one they put up. Um, his, that he's wanting to put up is a hundred and sixty foot tall. And just so we could get something, we talked to Encore and Encore, as long as it's a hundred and sixty feet away from there, he's, they're okay with it. But here's what his, not seven stone offer is and everything else. We'll definitely have to get a bond, everything else. If y'all even want to entertain it, what he's offering is he would construct it at full cost, city would not be out one dime. And in return, he would provide internet to us to our new city hall. Uh, he would provide internet to us to this building out here where the utility, uh, next door where the utility workers will be. Providing internet to the park and then also to the wood station and out there to the, um, where we have, uh, security cameras and everything like that. We already spent about two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty dollars a month already to spectrum. So that would be covered. Um, and then on top of that, he would, um, pay us a hundred and fifty dollars a month rent, um, just like we get on the water towers. And then, um, we could also use that for, um, get the fire department everywhere and put a repeater at the top of it. And then two, um, our water meters, we looked at putting a collector up there to where it would read twenty-four seven and give the, um, the citizens the ability to. Um, at any time, pull it up on their phone or their app and do everything else now. If we were to do that, just so you know, that's about an additional ten thousand dollar cost to put a collector up that reads the water meters. But as, uh, flip it up and provide an internet service to us and everything else, there's nothing, no charge to the city. But one of the reasons he asked, we do not have an ordinance on, um, cell phone towers or first standing towers in Lakeside City. We do have ordinance on windmills. Um, and then the ordinance on windmills is it has to be, um, set back the same number of feet as it is high. So if it's, you know, under sixty feet, it'd have to be set back on the property of sixty feet. Um, at the base of it, there'd be an air conditioning AC cabinet like this, he, just like the water tower, he'd have to have Encore on the heater out there. It'd all be underground and everything else. Um, and then the location would be, obviously, you see, this is where, uh, our new building is, is right here. Obviously, this is not there. He's talking about putting it somewhere right there on the edge of ours. It wouldn't be attached to the building or anything else like that. My main concern was if we ever get a high windstorm and that thing blows over and hits our building. There's, uh, insurance coverage on all that, covers all that, and then they're made to withstand high winds and stuff like that. This also would be, um, his selling point is it's an attraction to citizens because now he can offer, uh, and this is all techno. I don't understand, give you back internet service to everybody in Lakeside City, um, at a cheaper cost than what you already paid for.
I mean, I would, personally, I don't know how council goes, I mean, I would entertain it, but I'd like, I'd like for him to come to the venue because I have a bunch of questions.
Yeah, he, yes, definitely.
What does it do to the east side? What does it do for?
It would, it would be everybody in there and also reach out, you know, north on nineteen fifty-four, everything else. Um, there's a few people that try to get him and he can't, just due to it, it's, he can't provide service to him because we've got trees and stuff like that. Um, I've heard several good things about this company, but he's sort of like, hey, there's a lot of paperwork and logistics of it, and he doesn't even want to entertain it unless we're willing to entertain it first. So I'll go there. Yeah, I'll bring it to council and tell them, say, yeah, y'all willing to entertain it and then go from there, or no, hey, we're not even interested.
He, he would own the tower itself.
He would own the tower itself.
So what do you double with it? It's his.
Yep. Well, I mean, it's one of those, it's, it's not, once you put it up, it's up, unless you cut it down.
Just in case.
Yeah, no.
I would. Tower is set there, just cause.
Yeah, no.
I think it's something definitely worth looking at, and maybe, I know that that house right there is not, it's, that one's not part of Lakeside, right? It's on, I think it would probably be worth, if he does come and present something, let them know. Um, so that way, I know their input may, you know, not that, but we still want to keep the friendship there.
Yeah.
We would probably end up having to do an ordinance to make sure that there was maintenance and checking and all that stuff.
Yeah, and he gave, he has about a fifteen-page document already. This isn't his first one. He has some in Wichita County and stuff like that. For him to get them in Wichita, city limits, it's amazingly amount of documentation he has to have. But he had, this is not his first one he's been put up. He already has three of them up. And he owns, uh, some antennas on some other towers that don't belong to him. But it's one of those that's benefited him. If he owns a tower and he can do it on stuff, then it's cheaper to him because it's not having, obviously, paid rent to him.
I have those, I mean, I'll play a list of questions, you know, you.
Okay.
Maybe you sent those, so I'd like to talk to him in January and get, get council's.
So maybe he has to come back in January and hear things.
Maybe with council meeting. Let's just, uh, let's move to the January meeting, but I'll send you a list of questions that I just have. I'll be prepared to council, y'all have any questions, just, uh, send them to Eric. That way we can, we'll be, I guess, something. And they might be answering that document that he provided.
Perfect, I'll, I'll reach out then.
All right, brings us to, um. I mean, with council meeting. Let's just, uh, let's move to the January meeting, but I'll send you a list of questions that I just have. I'll be prepared to council, y'all have any questions, just, uh, send them to Eric. That way we can, we'll be, I guess, something. And they might be answering that document that he provided.
Perfect, I'll, I'll reach out then.
All right, brings us to, um. Item number eight, other council members. Um, at this time. Mr. Stransky, do you have something you want to talk about real quick?
Yeah. Um, so we actually were lucky, um, we had a little bit of an ice storm, uh, October twenty, the evening of October twenty-sixth.
John, nothing to argue, but if you'll just. Say your name and your title, so our people that watch understand.
John Stransky, uh, Emergency Management Coordinator, Lakeside City. Um, we were fortunate, we were kind of at the tail end of the, the ice storm that came through, uh, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. His main impact was obviously Oklahoma, those folks were without power for a couple of weeks. Um, Lakeside City at, uh, its peak had si- uh, sixty-seven homes without power. Um, that was the maximum amount of homes I noticed at any one time home, I was monitoring the Encore website. Um, there weren't any actual lines that were down, um, all the outages were due to the trees and transformer issues, um, so. Encore, uh, obviously should be commended, um, they did an excellent job in, you know, in a really difficult situation for them, so they restored power in Lakeside City, correct with us? We, because of the, of this, uh, event, uh, entered into some talks with the fire department. Um, concerning, uh, some things that we kind of brought up when, whenever I was first appointed. And the fire department is, is definitely open to discussing the possibility of acquiring, uh, equipment in the future. Um, that would be joint use equipment, uh, this equipment includes generators. Um, so that we can provide, uh, power, especially to homes that, that have a medical issue where a person's, uh, had medical issues in their homes and will be able to keep the power on for, for oxygen or what have you, that they need. So, um, we also discussed the fact that the new, the new fire station, uh, will be an excellent, uh, location for shelter. Um, a lot of little towns in, in Oklahoma, when they lost power, their, their fire departments opened up and, and they became warning, warning stations and Red Cross stations and. Just a place for folks to charge their cell phones and get warm and just, you know, kind of congregate and get away from the dark house, that kind of thing, so. Um, the fire department is definitely, uh, very interested in hosting that. In the, in the future, I'd like to actually look at, especially with the facility, within the new building that we have, um, I'd like to, to have a Red Cross, um, obviously with the blessing of the council. The Red Cross come in and, and, um, do a survey of the new building to, um, determine its, uh, worthwhileness to be used as a, as a shelter location. In the event we have some kind of disaster within Lakeside City. At this time, um, Lakeside City Baptist Church was, um, authorized to be a shelter, um, I believe that it's, uh, expired, uh, because the paper with the iPhone is, is pretty, pretty old. So, um, that's just something in the future to consider, but really would like to get the, um, some equipment together again, the fire department would probably be the ultimate. Curators of those equipment and provide the funds to purchase that equipment, so it'd be a joint use membership. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Oh, and that information was submitted to the state as a, um, to the state emergency management office. I submitted that, um, uh, afternoon the twenty-seventh, so.
Is that something that due to the usage of the generators, like if it would be for medical, things like that, would there be grants available that could be submitted possibly for that? Whether it be partial or helping with that?
That's definitely something I can look into, that's, there's an avenue we could go with FEMA for that. Um, the, the good news is, is, uh, with the fire department and the city of Lakeside City, uh, signed up with the Texas Surplus Commission. Texas Surplus Commission acquires items to the federal government, such as generators and heaters and light carts and stuff like that. And then they sell it to municipalities or fire departments, uh, basically just for a service fee. So a, uh, I'll give you an example, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar truck, uh, will cost a municipality or fire department five thousand dollars. So the, the benefit is huge. I was looking at generators while this was going on, just for giggles, on the surplus website, and they had a reconditioned military generator and it had nine hours on it and they wanted twelve hundred bucks for it. So that's the kind of equipment that I would look at, um, to bring in, um, you know, kind of gently use items where we're not paying, you know, full, uh, immune crisis. So we can spend, you know, stress that, that dollar as far out as we possibly can. Does the city? Oh, I would look for the military two thirty-three program. I'm not familiar with that, but I'll be happy to look it up. So, um, it's a surplus program where basically cities in the part, well, part of the country will get the equipment for free without paying anything for it. I can look that up. Be the first one to click on it, basically. Yeah, um, that sounds like a screening program, and at one time I did have screening rights, um, so I'm familiar with the, with the program, so I'd have to see how it would go about getting signed up for that. Um, I know what, the equipment is free, it's just, the only thing you have to pay is the transportation cost to go get the items. So, you know, if it's a larger item, you're gonna have to pay to have a truck here, but the, the savings would be substantial. Um, and I definitely would screen items out of like Fort Sill. Um, smaller locations, even Shepherd or Forest Base has, um, a D R M O or a Defense Logistics Agency D L A, you know, is what they call it, so there's items that go in there all the time, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna ask, like, the generator you're looking at, you're talking big enough to run the whole building over there?
There are some that would, yes, and then there's some that wouldn't run multiple homes, um, where we could set it up maybe on a street location and, and folks could run. It's not gonna look pretty, but we could run heavy-duty wall weather extension cords that we could at least keep their phones charged and keep their refrigerators going, um, that kind of a thing. If we got limited outages, um, I'd really like to see that, so. Um, so there's, there's different sizes. Right now, they have, uh, some really nice, uh, five K generators, they're, they're not really big, but they're just, they're heavy-duty military-grade, um, generators that are on heavy-duty military-grade trailers. Um, so it's all compact and, and that was actually an unit that only has nine hours, so. Good, good equipment for, for low, low price. And we have, like, Justin Sons is on the fire department, very, very well-versed mechanical, um, uh, individual. That would be an individual that, um, I would bring, uh, we would go to screen those items so that even the mechanic would check them out and make sure it's workable too, because we don't want to bring home any demons. The good news though is whatever we do acquire through that program is a thirty-day running back warranty. So we would just have to take the item back and say this thing does not do what we needed to do, and then there's no charge at that point. In the previous life, I acquired one point six mil in equipment. So it's a very low cost.
Look, I keep bringing this up, but.
Yes, sir.
That one grant we didn't qualify for for the generator over there, what's? Fire department qualify for a brand new one over there to run that building?
Um, we're still trying to, there's two more grants that we can take that, as we wrote for that, but do it, uh, sort of way FEMA rewrote their grant structure this year. We're gonna try to those two things and try to use some stuff.
I like John's deal, I'm just curious if they can tie it in.
Yeah.
There's also, like Eric and I have discussed, as far as the COVID money, there's a possibility, um, and I'll be brief, but Eric and I kind of mentioned it, we talked about it, but. Kind of came up with the idea of basically setting up a COVID mash, um, whereas we don't, like, we could look at it as this is where we're gonna do immunizations. If they do a big national mass immunizations type program, Lakeside City is, is poised to be kind of the center for the northern part of Archer County, which is mainly your population base, um, of Archer County. If we can do immunizations in a, in a location that is not inside our building, um, then that keeps our building sterile. So if we set it up kind of as a mash, in other words, we have, uh, a, a big blow-up shelter, um, that would be powered by generators that could possibly, um, power the building. Um, you know, that sort of thing, and obviously, port of pools and, and port of heats would also be involved in that, so. If we kind of look at it that way, that would be a multi-faceted and, um, mission, uh, type piece of equipment where it's not only COVID good, but we could also use it to prevent a national, uh, uh, natural disaster or. Fire department could use it for rehab if we're at a long-term incident or something like that, so. Um, I think that'd be a good way for us to stretch the COVID buck, but that is something Eric and I discussed.
Very good. Anything else? Thanks, Dylan, that's great.
You're welcome.
I just want to ask Eric, kind of talk about everybody, um, have said something over there, it's sad, it's not bad, we got that big cellar panel on Marjorie over there, and we kind of talked about there are no restrictions for towers or windmills and. I know we have one on the west side, it's in an open lot area, so it doesn't, you know, I guess draw to your eyes, like, in the neighborhood over here, and it's pretty big and. I don't know, we would have some kind of shit, and I'd put in a backyard or fence or, I mean, it's, that thing's big, and if they're all down in the neighborhood, they start lining the driveways with them, sticking them in the front yard. I just, maybe we should have just a devil something. I understand, I mean, it's great to go, go green, save some power, but, um, I'd hate to see a thing just fall over the front yard.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, it's great to go, go green, save some power, but, um, I'd hate to see a thing just fall over the front yard and stuff like that, so. I'll come up with some restrictions, Austin, Tiana, I'll look at it, and, and January, February, we'll come up with an ordinance restricting. Anything that's necessary for y'all.
Not, not, I think it's something to talk about, I mean, whether you do it or not, it's, we can, that'll be an agenda item, but I think it's something we need to.
Things we have two on the west side, one is on the property and the ground, and one is on the house.
Yeah, I was gonna, the roof one, the roof one, but it's kind of out of way.
Yeah, the roof.
Right.
I guess they couldn't.
Yeah, I'll do it, do it from now on, do it. Nothing good.
Eric, just a couple of questions, uh, compressed bricks, where are we at on that?
Uh, I'm sorry, I should have posted on the website, they came back, there you go. They're, they're viable, viable, and, um, they're now trying to pitch it to the school, I mean, obviously, you saw the school bond, they're trying to pitch it to the school bond, to, or, um, to get the school to purchase the bricks to build the building, and if they can do that, then we're golden. But, I don't know, but yo, if you ask my wife if you can buy a brick that costs ten dollars, and you get one that's donated to you free, she's gonna be like, it's ten dollars, 'cause it looks more aesthetically good. But, I don't know, yeah, everything came back, they got positive results, and it's good, and now they're taking it to the WFI, Steve, so they can get it in their school bond.
Perfect. Um, what are they gonna do if the, if Woodstock Falls doesn't know, they're gonna sell them outright somewhere else?
No, i- if Woodstock Falls, they don't, they don't have any other plans, if Woodstock Falls doesn't use them for their school, it's real, I mean, we can still manufacture them and, and do stuff like that, but it's just, no, if this doesn't happen, then they're gonna come back and sort of, uh, revisit the whole region of the lake and look at different options on that.
Uh, second thing is, is, um, how does the city look as far as prepared for, like, winter mix, is already, are they gonna exercise?
We got the ice melt, we got the snowplow, we're fully stocked on ice melt, snowplow, we were ready to go that last one, and the guys were out checking the others, and it was just one of those things, there wasn't enough for it. Uh, but yeah, we're, we're ready to go.
They have the truck and the tractor, right?
We have the tractor, that we use the blade on, we also have a big blade that goes on the front of the backhoe, and then we have a blade that goes on front of the F two fifty four job, and we got a whole pile of ice melt.
Do you have anything else in Howard?
No, but it's Texas, you gotta know what it's for.
There'll be, there'll be marked for it, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, good one, the only thing I have, you have anything?
Um, no, uh, but the only other thing I have, um, Woodstock County Appraisal District is looking for somebody, I mean, not Woodstock, Archer County Appraisal District is looking for a, a representative. Used to, Pizano, Pizano just recently resigned, he also resigned from his seat on Lake Woodstock Revitalization Committee, so if y'all know anybody that would be interested in either one of those two positions, um, good. Uh, the appraisal district meets once a quarter, she sends out everything you could, it would be, um, it would definitely be good, even if any of y'all are interested, just keep back with me or tell me if somebody that's interested like that. Or if there is somebody interested in taking a seat on the three bottom of the mission committee, let's do it.
All right, before we adjourn, Mr. Hall, thank you again, truly welcome, glad to have you here.
Thank you.
All right, I want to entertain a motion, did you? Mr. Evans, make a motion, is there a second? All the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Folks say no.